It's not the stage to do that. We cannot compromise Troy. So, please do not stop this. We will lose credibility, future investment, a competitive advantage, opportunity, strength, and quality of life. So, there. Mr. Fleming, I hope you were listening too, because I know you wanted to hear from your business community, and we have directed a lot of our advocacy towards you directly, and hopefully that's transpired since last week's meeting.
Mrs. Hodges, it's this five-minute limit if you'll wrap it up, please.
It is important. Troy needs this. The homework has been done. The questions have been resolved. And I remind you again of Henry Ford's quote, which was, "If he would have asked his customer what he or she wanted, it would have been a faster horse." Don't settle for that faster horse. Know what Troy needs to secure our future. Thank you.
Thank you.[51.23][51.23](APPLAUSE). Got a little track piece.
My symbol. I forgot to show you.
Thank you. John Wells?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. My name's John Wells. I've worked for Toyota Go-Say, a Japanese-owned company, since 1994. We've been located in Troy since that time. They made it the world headquarters in 1999, or the U.S. headquarters. We employ about 180 people today in Troy and 6,000 throughout North America. I emailed you all last week in support of the Transit Center. I appreciate the time you took. I feel Troy is a place people want to live. And as business suffers, of course, cities and employees will suffer. Business, we don't get a vote. Business, actually, we pay taxes, generally property and personal property and real taxes. What the business wants for its employees is safety, clean roads, access to restaurants, and a place to feel proud of to come to work and to socialize. And so, my question to you, Mayor, and also City Council, is what is Troy doing to enhance the business environment in Troy? I'm not talking about just local businesses, but we're in a world economy. Korea will be expanding here. Russia will be expanding here. China will be expanding here. Why should Troy be the place they locate? We need something that attracts those. What do they do? Is it a good place to wait? Do I have the education? And is it a good place to live? Which I think Troy has many of that. Today, the business environment is very competitive. My company is located in approximately 12 different places in North America, and those cities want our business. And so, I say, if business thrives, communities prosper. So, I ask all of you to approve the Troy Transit Center. I think it's good for business, and I think it'll be attraction for years to come. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.[201.12][201.12](APPLAUSE). Next, we have James Savage. Mr. Savage?
Good evening, Mayor. And good evening, City Council. You know, sometimes I think I've been through all this before, except it wasn't transit center, it was something else, and the speeches sound exactly the same. I had a couple of points from the last meeting, and it seemed like most of the pro-transit center speakers said the same thing. Basically, taxpayer money is here, let's spend it. Another frequent comment was the Troy Chamber of Commerce endorses it, so therefore it's assumed it must be good. Well, the Troy Chamber of Commerce endorsed the Convention Center, and that was quite a few years ago. And I have a lever here from that, and it was called the Proposal Six. And it was paid for, and this was paid for by the Troy Chamber Committee to support Proposal Six. The proposal was endorsed by the majority of the council at that time, and it was defeated by 80 to 20 percent of the residents. Eighty percent voted no against the leadership of this city, against the Chamber of Commerce, against many other civic deniers, business deniers. Eighty percent. This is an unheard-of number. In the history of the world, I can only think of three occasions where the ruling elite has been turned down by that kind of majority in a democratic system. I won't go into the details. But the Chamber also endorsed the I-75 interchange, the stadium, the pavilions, the February 2010 tax increase, et cetera, et cetera. So, I have to wonder if the Chamber of Commerce is, in fact, in step with the people of Troy. In the last two years, I've tried to get information regarding the cost to the city of Troy to date for the proposed Transit Center. Members of the previous council, namely Mayor Schilling and Councilwoman Mary Kirwin, repeatedly indicated there was no cost to Detroit taxpayers. Well, I estimate the cost could be over $1 million so far to the taxpayers, because does the admitted cost of, what was it, $480,000, did that include all the engineering studies, all the lobbyist fees, all the legal fees, all staff time, and all consulting fees? I don't think so, because I don't think they've taken any staff time into account for that. Does anybody really believe that people in Troy will use a train just because there's a new fancy station? And isn't it ironic that while we are considering building a multimillion-dollar train station, Detroit is considering privatizing their bus system only two years after opening a multimillion-dollar fancy bus depot? Over the years, I have seen previous Troy councils bogged down in a mora of contentious issues that have torn this community apart, very similar to what I'm seeing here. People falling against, council falling against. And this has been going on a long time, and it seems like we can never put this city together. Thousands of hours of council and staff time was wasted on issues such as the Convention Center, the wetlands ordinance, the stadium, the I-75 interchange, the tax increase, the pavilions, the Monarch Project, all of these. And they all failed. And they all had the same ingredients as this project, the glossy brochures, the future predictions, and this is all this has got, is future predictions, the PowerPoint presentations, et cetera. Although they still failed, they still cost a sea of millions of dollars. Years ago, there was no midnight cutoff time, and many meetings lasted till 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning because of these issues. Towards the end of the Monarch issue, there was a time of relative calm during the three years that Mr. Nelson was the city manager. And most of those meetings were over by 9:30, 10:00 o'clock, and council was able to consider it unreal issues like the roads, and traffic, and services.
Mr. Savage, I'm sorry. That's your five minutes. If you could wrap it up, please.
So, I have one more paragraph.
Wrap it up.
And this came out tonight. In the many years that I have attended Troy City Council meetings, I do not recall any time when a council vote was necessary to allow a presentation. I do remember times when council allowed presenters to take up hours and hours of council time, even sometimes calling them up from the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Next is Rhonda Hendrickson.
Good evening. I was the chair of the Proposal One campaign, president of the Friends of the Library, and I hold a master's degree in library science. I've spent countless hours researching our library and many other library issues, and I feel confident that I have done my homework about the library. More so, I dare say, than the many people that worked to defeat both library millages or make promises about the library without ever going there, sitting down with our library director, or finding out how our library operates. First, I would like to say something I would like you to know about our library director, Kathy Russ. I have spoken to many library professionals, and I can tell you that she is very well-respected by her peers and in her profession. She has endured the most difficult circumstances the last two years, facing closure, losing valued employees, keeping morale up, and putting up with continuous misinformation. She's had to deal with lies about her salary, her perks and pleasures, and being told, and I quote, "One need only put their hair in a bun to do her job." The level of instability she has managed is unconscionable, and it is a wonder and a tribute to her professionalism that she gets up and goes to work for us every day to manage our nationally-ranked library. Now Kathy, for probably the 50th time, has put together a scenario about how much the library will cost, and she answers the question she's always asking, "What kind of a library do you want?" Proposal One would have provided for normal library hours seven days a week. By working against Proposal One, you told citizens that basically there was approximately $3.7 million to pay for a full-time library in the city budget. Council candidate Ed Kepin started a petition and told people that the money was there, and they need not vote for any millage. The successful August millage, you said the money was there in slush funds, but voters, thankfully, supported the six-day-a-week library millage. In the November election, the mayor and some candidates ran on the promise of reinstating Saturday because the money was there, you said. Two weeks ago, you tried to push through a resolution to open on December 3 without asking how much it would cost, where the money would come from, or if the library could currently service that day. So, as I see it, the voters of this city have saved their library, and you, potentially. They have made it so you don't have to find six days of funding that you said you could. You only have to come up with one day. One day. And now you're looking to cut other days of the week to pay for it. You promised the voters the money was there for seven days. We want our seven-day-a-week library with no cuts to other hours or days of the week. In a line from the movie Jerry Maguire, "Show me the money." If you do not come up with the money to pay for reinstating Saturday without cuts to days or hours, then you have lied to us not once, not twice, but three times about the budget of this city. Those of us paying close attention to the library for the last two years knew the library was going to have to get some stable funding, perhaps from a millage, or it was going to be at the mercy of declining revenues every year. These decisions were not made in a vacuum or without great difficulty. Where is the money? Surely not reserve funds, those are critical to protect, police, snow plowing, not the Transit Center, as you would have people believe in campaign literature. Whose service are you willing to sacrifice? Preschoolers, homeschool families, students, the unemployed, seniors? Adding Saturday and closing Sunday means Troy will not have access to any library service on Sunday here or in other cities. I did my homework, as did many other citizens who fought to save this library. Library supporters are not whiners, as we've been called. We're a dedicated group of people that have a voice and a connection about the kind of community we want going forward. The credibility of you and your political backers is on the line here tonight. Remember, you said you could do it if you were sitting in those seats, and here you are. So, we, the people, are watching. Voters provided you a millage for seven days of funding. Show us the money for the one day without any other cuts. Should be easy, since it's not all the seven days, and certainly nothing to brag about, since you promised voters so much more. If you can't do that, it will speak volumes about your complete lack of financial knowledge and understanding of this city, or the deliberate lengths you are willing to go to to misrepresent it. Thank you.[819.93][819.93](APPLAUSE).
I have to agree with you. We need a seven-day-a-week library. James Grex is next, please.
Good morning. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to talk tonight about the Birmingham train station. The Birmingham train station. They had a great two-story train depot there, just beautiful, and acres of parking. For decades, it went empty. That was back when people worked in Detroit. People didn't want to use it. They wanted to use their cars. They still want to use their cars. The Birmingham train station right now, I believe, is adequate for the amount of people they have. There's three trains, like the gentleman said, spaced wide apart, and people don't use it. I think we've got enough right now with the Birmingham train station. Birmingham doesn't want to spend any money on it, because they know these are hard times. In Troy, these are hard times. The question is, do we want to spend money on a train station gambling on getting federal funds and not having to pay them back because we didn't do it on time, or on cost, or on their plans? They're the ones that make the decision whether we have to pay it back or not. If we've got a bridge going over the railroad tracks to get to the train platform in Birmingham, you've got to wonder about how you're going to keep it ice and snow-free in the winter. Are the ADA people going to say, "No, you've got to provide taxicab service for ADA people"? It's a big can of snakes, in my opinion. But anyhow, what I feel council's primary obligation is to protect the citizens of Troy. And we have a problem, because we've got a lot of Troy officers laid off or positions unfilled. I think for every $150,000 or $140,000 you can find anywhere in the system, it ought to go to bring back one more policeman. We're down over two dozen policemen, and we need to get those people back. Sterling Heights, by the way, has spent some of their reserve funds, the reserve funds for rainy days. They decided these were rainy days, and they've spent some of that money to keep their police staffed at a higher level, and there's been no effect on their bond rating, which is pretty darn good. I believe it's as good as ours, I'm not sure. I think that really what you have to do is decide whether the Birmingham train station is more important than the citizens of Troy and a great police department. The Troy police are very expensive. They're very well-trained, and they're very efficient. When you call for Troy policemen, you want them there, rather than getting an excuse or, you know, "We don't have enough officers," because we've only got so many officers. I think we have to get back up to the staffing levels we had before as soon as possible. I think that's the number-one goal. We've got the library open. We've got a good fire department. The only thing we're lacking in right now is the police department. I think we've got to get those guys back as soon as possible, those guys and gals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grex. And next is Linda Cashma. Good evening, Mrs. Cashma.
Cashma. Good evening, Mayor, Council. There's a very important decision weighing on your shoulders, that being the decision to continue with the Transit Center or kill the project. I also wondered what this would mean for the future of our city. At first blush, many would say it's fruitless, since no return on investment can be accurately projected. However, if Troy is to be the city of tomorrow today, we need to look at the future, not dwell on the past or even the present. As with all fiscally conservative decisions, we need to consider the big picture. With that in mind, what does it mean to develop the Transit Center and be part of the Metro-Detroit and Michigan Initiative to put this area back on the map for tourists, businesses, and families? Some will say ridership is not that high to warrant this. Others will say the funds should be used to offset our national debt, but we know that can't be done. While others just don't want to move out of their comfort zone into the future. Looking forward, rather than in the rearview mirror, is clearly the way to move this city into the future. After all, if one continues to look in the rearview mirror, one will crash. By that, I mean we'll miss the bus, get derailed, pardon the puns, and end up as a city that refused to have forward vision. We need to stay on track and be a city with forward vision. What if Einstein had listened to the boos from the podium when he first released his ideas? He was considered an outcast by his peers in the scientific community. We're all thankful that he chose to move forward. Mr. Arkin pointed out how accurate projections can't be made before the system's complete. The Transit Center may not initially be the draw-to-our city that's anticipated. However, the rise of the railroads in the U.S., to provide some historical perspective, took place largely in the 1850s and 1860s, while the scale of economies enabled by mass distribution were not fully exploited until years later. We need to seize this opportunity to position us well for the future. So, I hope you listened to those who spoke, and I hope you reviewed the information, and make your decision based not on your personal ideology, but on what's best for Troy. And I hope this helps you vote yes for the Transit Center. Also, as a side note, the Convention Center could not have been defeated by 80% of the residents, because 80% of the residents aren't registered voters, and only about 20% of the registered voters voted. Also, Sterling Heights has the ability to raise or lower their millage, which was taken away from us when we had the tax cap. Thank you.
Thank you.[1213.15][1213.15](APPLAUSE). Next signed up to speak is David Wise. David?
Good evening. I guess this is the first year that Doug will not be inviting me to his Christmas party, huh? A little bit about me. My background, I'm a patent attorney, which means I have an engineering degree and a law degree. I'm a former resident of Troy. I'm currently a resident of Birmingham. My office is in Birmingham. As a patent attorney, I do literally review the technology of tomorrow today. Technologist Carver Mead had said, "We depend on innovations of the citizens of free economy to keep ahead of the bureaucrats and the people who make a living on control and planning." The recent passing of Steve Jobs and thoughts of what he invented should remind us how, in comparison, ill-equipped government bureaucrats who boss around tax dollars are able to plan industries of the present, let alone the future. The Transit Center is essentially Solyndra. I think you guys are all familiar with Solyndra. $535 million government loan guarantee, March 2009, bankrupt, August 2011. Now, when government takes money from the private economy and puts it into a loser, it not only wastes that money, but it also denies that capital to some other project in the private economy that may have succeeded. I hope you're all familiar with opportunity cost. That's what that is. Solyndra, again, shows just how ill-equipped government is able to predict industries of the present, much less the future. Someone asked for facts. Some facts. Mass transit has been in decline since the end of World War II. 50% of the population took mass transit at the end of World War II. Now, it's less than 2%. We, the taxpayers, are forced to subsidize at least 2/3 of the cost of every mass transit user. Michigan taxpayers currently subsidize Amtrak. $30 per rider. Every rider, you're paying $40. Per person miles of travel, that's how things are estimated in a mass transit comparison realm. You spend 20 times as much on public transit as on roadways. I mean, the race between the automobile and mass transit is over. The auto has won. We're in Detroit. I mean, I don't know what more to say about that. I don't understand the idea of going back in time instead of into the future. Some more context. Since 1960, driving has increased by a whopping 420%, whereas those who take mass transit to work fell from about 13% to less than 5%. Trying to get through this in less than five minutes. Per passenger mile, that's what I mentioned earlier, cost for roads is about 3.2 cents per passenger mile. But that's actually covered by the users, vehicle registrations, license fees, gas taxes. It actually spends, you actually receive a profit. Government receives a so-called profit, if anything government does can be considered profitable. You receive a profit from roads. In comparison, mass transit costs about 71 cents per passenger mile. Taxpayer-funded subsidies of that 71 cents are 53 cents. Light rail, that's what a lot of people have been talking about with regards to the Transit Center, that's even worse. Subsidies are $1.73 per passenger mile. Taxpayers pay 90% of the cost. Also, we found that the users of light rail are not new users, they're just typically bus riders who shift to using light rail. The Smart Bus. In 2010, the Smart Bus cost taxpayers $122 million. That's siphoned from the Michigan annual road budget. So, I hope when you hit a pothole, you think about that. Users of Smart Bus pay less than 20% of the cost. That doesn't even count the capital investment, buses, maintenance, et cetera. The Smart Bus system, over the next four years, will generate deficits of $5.8 million, $10.8 million, $15.4 million, and then $17.3 million. That's why there was a recent push in Oakland County, or in the Oakland County Commission, to force everyone in Oakland County to pay the bus tax. Fortunately, that was defeated. Mass transit, there's no evidence of any city in which transit is run on sound business principles. Yeah...
David Wise, your five minutes is up, if you could wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I came here tonight, I left literally my three-day-old baby to speak to you. And perhaps that'll happen in the future, perhaps not. But that little baby, he was born three days ago. Because of government expenditures such as this, he already owes $35,000 in federal debt. So, I guess to paraphrase Hillary Clinton, "Let's not build this boondoggle for the children."
Thank you, Mr. Wise.[1556.83][1556.83](APPLAUSE). And congratulations on your new baby. Richard Rosenbaum? Mr. Rosenbaum?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Richard Rosenbaum. I've lived in the same house in Booneville Township for the last 43 years, and my office has been on the same corner in Birmingham for the last 33 years. And my business in Birmingham is running a business called the Redivex Corporation, which is involved in research and development and consulting.
Mr. Rosenbaum, could you put the microphone closer?
Sure.
Put it up a little bit? Thank you.
My interest in the railroad here in Birmingham was about 15 or 20 years ago, when I took my first trip to Chicago and found that there was no ramp going up to the tracks. And I had a few calls at the City Hall, and then there was a ramp. Wasn't a very good ramp, but that there was a ramp, so that a person lugging luggage and so forth would have less of a difficulty in getting up to trackside. Then I followed every detail of the proposal for the Transit Center, trying to get as much information as possible, and even sending out Freedom of Information Act requests, one of which cost me $382.79. And I'd be very happy to show you what I got for that $382. I just have a few observations about the Transit Center, and I hope I won't take too much of your time. The cost figures have ranged from $3 million to $10 million, and $6 million is a typical figure. There are 28 daily borders. That would be nine for each of the three trains. That's more than $200,000 per daily border, and that would make this one of the most expensive train stations on the planet. I've seen Transit Centers of all types in Europe and Asia and other places where I've traveled, and I've never seen one that wasn't visible from a main road. This Transit Center that is being proposed isn't visible from the two main roads, Coolidge or Maple. Then, we're talking about helping people on the buses. We're not helping the people on the buses, we're delaying their arrival at their destination by about 10 minutes. 99.9% of the people who take the bus will never get on the train, and 99.99% of those on the train will never get off and want to get on a bus. So, there's absolutely no connection between the two. The cost figures have ranged from $3 million to $10 million, and $6 million is a typical figure. There are 28 daily borders. That would be nine for each of the three trains. That's more than $200,000 per daily border, and that would make this one of the most expensive train stations on the planet. I've seen transit centers of all types in Europe and Asia and other places where I've traveled, and I've never seen one that wasn't visible from a main road. This transit center that is being proposed isn't visible from the two main roads, Coolidge or Maple. Then, we're talking about helping people on the buses. We're not helping the people on the buses, we're delaying their arrival at their destination by about 10 minutes. 99.9% of the people who take the bus will never get on the train, and 99.99% of those on the train will never get off and want to get on a bus. So there's absolutely no connection between the two. So why inconvenience all these people are taking the Maple and Coolidge buses, going out of their way five to 10 minutes to go by the Transit Center when there's nobody to pick up and nobody wanting to get off the bus? Then the cost of maintaining a building like this has got to be enormous, if the figures in the square footage are accurate. It's going to cost quite a bit of money to heat and light and staff a building, especially when you're talking about doing it late at night when the last train is at 1:30 in the But what I've been after for some time is a trackside platform that was heated and had a washroom and had a telephone and maybe with video surveillance to prevent crime and make people feel at ease while they're waiting for the train, which almost always is late, coming or going. You can check the Amtrak website almost any time, and almost all the trains, the majority of the trains, are always late. And sometimes late half an hour, 45 minutes, standing out on that platform is very difficult in weather like this when your train is late. And then they're trying to tie this to high-speed, high-speed rail. One-third of the commute from Pontiac to Detroit is the trip from Pontiac to Ann Arbor. That's a 61-mile trek that takes two hours, which means that the train travels at 29 miles an hour. One time I was on the train and a bus passed the train in, I believe it was Royal Oak or Hazel Park. Then I'd just like to bring up one other matter. It seems that the owner of the shopping center is a major owner of the airport limo service, which intends to have a presence near that train station. And by connecting with that, so one would have to assume he's looking for a watering hole for the drivers of the limos and a place for his dispatchers to receive calls and to contact drivers. And I don't think that building should be provided at the public expense for that purpose. That summarizes my spiel, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That was five minutes exactly.[730.01][730.01](APPLAUSE). Minish Baxi?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, Mayor Daniels and the councilman. Here's the simple part I want to mention, is there are two types of people. The first type of person forgets the lessons from other people, which means they make mistakes themselves. And the second group of people are those people who choose to learn from other people's mistakes. So some of you may or may not have paid attention to the headlines in the international news in the last few days. Let me just point out a couple of those. The first one is Italy's borrowing cost keeps rising to a point that a country cannot pay its debts. The second headline was Belgium has been downgraded, what used to be AAA to AA+ to AA now bond rating. And please remember, Brussels is the center of Europe in terms of Eurozone. Now, these countries did not learn their lesson. Just like the people who keep talking about the future, these people were investing in the future, which never happened. The future that really happened was an extended government, taxpayers burdened with debt, and the countries are no longer being ruled by the very people who were elected to rule them because Europe, the Eurozone, is practically taking over these countries, Italy, Greece, and others, one by one. There is another country whose election took place last weekend, and there, the person actually took action, and he won the elections in New Zealand. Mr. Key has promised, based on his, obviously, projections and his seriousness about handling debt, that by 2014 and 15, they will be in surplus. So for those who are asking about building the Transit Center, let me remind you about something which simply happened recently, which seems to have forgotten. And Rhonda was very kind enough to illuminate us that the money is not there for the library. What if the money is not there for the city Transit Center? Are we going to go back to the taxpayers and keep asking them for more money, because which is exactly what the other people have been saying? So looking at the track record, if the city is having problems balancing its priorities with something as simple as possible, the library, why do we want to take on something which we don't even have an exact estimate on? What would we be looking at in the future? And I will tell you from my experience being from India, where people talk about all these expenses and transits and everything else, people are buying cars like crazy despite transit centers. And I can tell you that most people love their independence, and they would continue to do that. From all the angles that I've been looking at, the government doesn't need to extend itself. There is no reason to burden the taxpayer in the future for something which may not result in any plus favors at all. So I recommend the city council to strongly look at this particular situation and say, "Hey, do we want to gamble with the taxpayer dollars, or do we want to be responsible to the taxpayer?" Thank you.
Thank you, Minish.[941.29][941.29](APPLAUSE). Edna Abraham?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. Wasn't actually planning to speak about the Transit Center, but the spirit moved me, and so here I am. As many of you know, I've been a resident of Troy all my life, that's 35 years, and I can remember when this city was two-lane roads. I remember when there was a farm on Long Lake right across the subdivision from where I lived. I've seen so many changes. I graduated high school here, went to Athens, and I think about my graduating class, and it was about 400 or so students. And there's not many that reside in southeast Michigan, and even fewer that live in Troy. And I think about my classmates from U of M. Where are they? Well, I can tell you where they are. Chicago, New York, Seattle, San Francisco. And how'd they end up there? Well, they got a job offer, but the other part of it is because they had mass transit there. They couldn't afford having a vehicle or insurance right out of college. So they went to where they had a job and there was mass transit that could get them around the region. And guess what? They're still there, 10, 20 years later, with their families, with no plans to move back to southeast Michigan. Troy's an aging city, we know that. We've looked at the demographics. If we want educated, young people with families, we need mass transit in this area to make a compelling argument to move to Troy or even southeast Michigan. I can't think of a better way to stimulate the economy. As Mrs. Hodges said, Henry Ford was quoted as saying, "If I'd asked people what they wanted, they would have asked for a faster horse." More recently, Steve Jobs said, "Sometimes people don't know what they want." And I can guarantee you, five years ago, I never could have dreamt up an iPhone or imagined life without it, but I feel like I've lost a limb when I leave it at home. I think we can agree that Steve Jobs and Henry Ford were very innovative, out-of-the-box thinkers. They shifted paradigms. I'm asking you guys to also think out of the box and shift those paradigms. We've been talking about the Transit Center for 10 years. Let's not suffer any more paralysis by analysis. The data is there. And I work in automotive. I understand, I've seen, I've witnessed paralysis by analysis. It's what led to bankruptcy. I'd also comment to say, I am in the automotive industry, and I have many colleagues that carpool or use Michiban. And they would love mass transit. And even the automotive industry understands that mass transit is not going away, it's only getting bigger, whether it's a third-world country, an emerging nation, or one that's firmly established. I ask you to put your personal feelings aside, look at the bigger picture, and support the Transit Center. Thank you.
Thank you.[1147.58][1147.58](APPLAUSE). That concludes the people that have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, Mr. Shepke?
Mayor and members of council, I've sat here for a couple of council meetings now and listened to the different comments. And the people trying to get a big wave of support behind the Transit Center, to me, this city's first responsibility is to its citizens with core services. And if we're having a hard time with core services, the things that people maybe don't actually think that, maybe it's not some futuristic thing, but the garbage still has to be picked up, the streets have to be plowed, the police have to be out there protecting the community, the schools have to be properly staffed, and the library has to be open so for the future generations can get a heads up on what's, on how to study and conduct their lives. This Transit Center is a very risky adventure at best. Martin Howlack brought up one time at a council meeting on the Davis Bacon Act, and a lot of people here probably don't know what the Davis Bacon Act is, and that's that any job, any construction project with government money, the highest prevailing wage in that area has to be paid for the workers on the property and also to staff it. So this is, that's my take on it. Now, if I'm wrong, I'll stand corrected. And another thing about rapid transit, I had a friend that his brother came in from North Dakota, and when they got in Michigan, especially within 50 miles of Detroit, they're going 10 or 15 miles an hour because the infrastructure on all the rails is in such poor shape that it's dangerous to ride these trains any faster, and this is an Amtrak. So this rapid transit, and I've been in countries and I've been in cities, I have a son in Portland, and they have a beautiful downtown section with trains and streetcars, every 15 minutes you can get on one and go anywhere you want. We're coming from a city of Detroit down there. I grew up around Detroit, and I used to take buses down to Grand Circus Park and had, it looks like Hiroshima and Nagasaki down there for crying out loud. You're not going to get that many people coming out here to buy and to purchase and do things like that. This whole thing really smells, and when you add up what it costs per mile to run this thing, I think it's absurd for the city of Troy to risk this kind of capital. And really, there's an open end on that amount of capital, we don't know what it is, on a project like this. Michelle Hodges and the Chamber of Commerce have backed every ill-found project that's come before this council and other councils in the past, in the years that I've been coming down here. And I have no credence at all to whatever, between them and the Downtown Development Authority, they seem to follow these things and push them right along, and I think it's terrible. And please, be responsible to the voters of Troy, all the voters, because I've knocked on a lot of doors and talked to a lot of people. And there's no support for this thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shepke. There's a gentleman in the back, I'm not sure your name, but if you'd like to speak? Hi, could you introduce yourself, please?
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Derek Finley. Work with an organization called JVS. First off, congratulations to the newly-elected officials here. Definitely good luck and looking to work with you as well. Again, my name is Derek Finley, I work with an organization called JVS. We actually work in the community and do some good work in terms of workforce development and developing individuals for work opportunities and providing the training for those work opportunities. In particular, one of our programs works heavily with individuals with special needs and disabilities, and they are very dependent on public transportation and, of course, you know, to arrive at the different communities around the Detroit metro area. So this Transit Center would be a tremendous benefit to them in this community to allow them to continue to maintain and obtain their job opportunities as we go forward. Also, I met with a good friend of mine earlier, Tom Schneider, who is Vice President of Business Development at the Hayman Company, and he was adamant. He sent me a letter that he wanted me to read for the council here today as well, as well for the audience. I am writing to Tom notes. I am writing to express my strong support for the Troy Transit Center and ask that you support it too. Recently, at the U of M-sponsored Urban Land Institute Real Estate Forum on November 9th and 10th of 2011, the presenters made it clear that the trend in desired work and live environments is pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, and transit-friendly. If they feel safe, people want to leave the car behind. Locally, think Somerset. From a real estate perspective, transit will drive demand, development, and values in this community. Yes, it involves federal dollars, but then so did the interstate freeway system that drove our economy for much of the 20th century. At last year's Michigan Commercial Board of Realtors meeting, John Furchill, who spearheaded the book Cadillac Restoration downtown Detroit, said that the introduction of transit to Euclid Avenue in his hometown of Cleveland, Ohio spurred a huge jump in real estate activity in the area, especially at the transit stops. I urge you to support the Troy Transit Center development. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir.[1546.33][1546.33](APPLAUSE). Mr. Chair Seros, I saw your hand go up first.
Mayor, members of the council, during the last, during the study session last week, it was brought out that Grand Sucre is currently suing the city of Troy over dispute of that land.
Could you bring your mic down a little bit?
If Grand Sucre wins, we have two options. We can cancel further work, in which case the city is responsible to pay back to the federal government all monies that have been spent to that time. We can buy the land from Grand Sucre, probably for a much inflated price. Who's going to pay those costs? Assuming Troy goes ahead with the project, I've yet to see a government project at any level coming on budget. Who's going to pay the cost overruns? We're budgeted for $30,000 a year for maintenance costs. That's optimistic. We have a building heated in winter, cooled in summer, with public restrooms which require cleaning. In addition, this thing, I don't think anybody's thought of, it's going to attract some homeless people. Who's going to pay the cost? With or without the homeless, it will require more safety and police presence. We're already short police, who's going to pay the cost? I don't think the people of Troy are going to stand for another millage increase, not with the way it was done with the library. Now, I'm all for capitalism and free markets. We've heard a lot of businesspeople and the city of, and the Troy Chamber of Commerce here tonight telling us that they'll benefit greatly from this project. I've got an idea how to pay for everything. May I strongly suggest that because they will greatly benefit from the increase of 133 passengers per day over the next 16 years, and these are your data, not mine, that a special assessment be levied upon them for all the above problems as they occur. I think it's only fair that those increasing profits, making their recipients rich, pay for these costs. After all, as someone in higher government has stated, "The rich should pay their fair share." I stated last week I was a commuter in Chicago, and I've also had the pleasure of riding the New Jersey commuter trains to New York. None of these have an enclosed train stop, they're all platforms, open to the elements. I think this is a sufficient type of facility for the volume of riders this stop needs and will need far into the future. Now, last week we had a problem with the city charter. In my personal opinion, after watching the TV over a number of months, the last mayor and council defied the city charter when it suited them. I think you will find that Mayor Daniels would be more observant of it than they were. To those who insist on nitpicking this administration, I again will quote that higher government official. Your side lost. Now let's get on with the future. Thank you.
Thank you.[1737.33][1737.33](APPLAUSE). Mr. Burke?
Just a quick comment on the economics of mass transit. Because we do have some mass transit people ignore in metro Detroit, it's the people mover. It's been around a long time. It's been in the news because they're talking about raising the fare from 50 cents to 75 cents.
Your side lost. Now let's get on with the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Just a quick comment on the economics of mass transit. Because we do have some mass transit, people ignore in metro Detroit, it's the people mover. It's been around a long time. It's been in the news because they're talking about raising the fare from 50 cents to 75 cents, but then they talk about the cost is about eight bucks a fare. The people pay 50 cents or 75, but the cost is eight bucks a user. The train ride downtown, I think, is $11, whether you're starting downtown or coming north, or north going south. $11 each way is not cheap transportation, and that doesn't get you where you're going, it just gets you from a train station to a train station. You still need a cab ride or a bus ride on either end. That is not economical transportation, but that's the fare. I'm afraid to know what the cost would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If you could introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Johansson, proud graduate, 1976, of Troy High School. I still live in Troy. I love Troy. I'm concerned about Troy. There's a little less love than there was the last council meeting I came here. In fact, Ms. Beltramini was quoted in a newspaper article of saying, "You should go to school so you don't make an expensive mistake." Well, it seems to me, we send politicians to school and they take away their common sense and their fiscal responsibility. Ms. Beltramini said today that they talked about the First Amendment when she went to her junket. I found that interesting. I was here the night when Mrs. Beltramini led the charge against Councilman Martin Howellak trying to suspend his First Amendment rights in Troy. That's not the school I want you to go to. We elected you, we like you, we want you to be you. A master plan in Troy is scary. I come home up Rochester Road, and I see a scrapyard in Troy. A scrapyard where a couple of years ago, two doors down, a friend wanted to open a rollcar agency. Because it was made for light industrial, he was unable to get the okay until the next, you know, he finally got the okay six months later, after the agency had gone to another city. And I wonder, when I drive by that scrapyard, would I rather see, you know, a parking lot full of new cars, or do I want to see the scrapyard? I go past the scrapyard and I see the Hooters, it was such a war getting that in. And, you know, once again, I'd way rather look at pretty girls than a scrapyard. I go a little farther, I see Costello Hardware going out of business. It breaks my heart, I've been going there 40 years probably. I go a little further, and there's a pawn shop, a gold pawn shop with the clown out front spinning his "We Buy Gold" sign. I go up a little further, I see an electronic sign flashing in Lady Jane, something about bikini waxing, and I'm thinking, is this Troy or is this Las Vegas? I don't know who the master is or who did the planning. I'd like to see Troy once again brought back to, you know, a vibrant city. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. I know you're Jordan, I don't recall your name.
It's okay, everybody butchers the last name. Mayor, members of council, city staff, Jordan Katupi with the International Academy of Design and Technology, and also here on behalf of the Economic Development Committee for the Troy Chamber of Commerce. As many of you may recall from last meeting, I came to you and requested that when we're looking at the transit center debate, that we're pragmatic in our approach. And at the study session, numerous members of council mentioned their ideology as opposed to their pragmatism. And since we've regressed a little bit, and we're now back to ideology and looking at that when we're evaluating the transit center, I request that you look at the ideology that each one of you was elected for. And that was doing what is best for Troy, always. Not doing what's best for the federal government, not doing what's best for the state government, but doing what's best for the city of Troy, always in every decision that you make. Consider all of the great accomplishments that we've made in infrastructure in the United States of America. The business case for every one of them has been terrible. Yet we still went on, we moved forward, we made a decision to make an investment in our future, not for today, not for tomorrow, but for 10, 20, and 50 years from now. I feel for, as I look at the business case and I look at the future of Troy and where we're going, it's for those reasons that it's critical that each one of you look at where we're going to be in 20, 30, 40, and 50 years, and say yes to the Troy Transit Center. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? I think that concludes the public comments portion of the meeting. We're going to take a five-minute break, and this time it'll be five minutes, I promise.
Can we call the meeting back to order, please?
Great. You have my blessing. You can just come up and punch me right in the mouth. Okay?
That's fine.
Thank you, thank you very much. Meeting's called back to order. We're going to proceed to regular business.
Madam Mayor, just like to respond, reply to public comment.
Council comments, yes?
Thank you. I just thought I'd quickly end speculation of why I voted no on having David Wise speak. It was a difficult decision because I agree with about 95 percent of what David Wise said about the Transit Center. I am still opposed to it and will be voting no. In fact, a little bit more difficult because David's also a friend of mine. But in the end, the principle that everyone that speaks in front of the City Council should have an equal amount of time stands. I think that it would be wrong to tell the other 26 people that came and spoke today that your opinion is a little bit less worthy is incorrect. I agree management will from time to time put a finger on the scales or a thumb on the scales, giving their opinion one way or another. But as City Council members, we're easy to reach, easy to politic, easy to say this is the facts one way or another, and I think that's appropriate. And if we start having a pro and a con speaker, we're going to end up with a situation where we're searching for a pro and con speaker. And then we'll need a con speaker arguing for this reason or a pro speaker arguing for that reason. I don't think that's a good idea for the council to get in habit of. And then finally, David left, but yes, you're still invited to my Christmas party, so.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Henderson?
Along those lines, I took kind of a tally going on, and it's just about a dead heat, pros and cons. So I think mission accomplished in terms of what we were looking for together in terms of information. But I wanted to address two things, well, one thing actually, but spoken by two people. And that's Henry Ford's quote about giving the people a faster horse. I just want to make note that Henry Ford and Steve Jobs both did this on their own money, not publicly.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, then we'll move on to regular business. And we're first doing a City Council appointment. We are appointing the Parks and Recreation Board's student representative. Does someone want to read the resolution or make a resolution? Ms. Fleming?
Sure. I'll move the resolution to appoint, and I'll butcher this name, to the Parks and Recreation Board, Aditya Yalamachi, or Yalamachia, student representative. Term expires 7/31/2012.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Discussion? Resolution made by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the appointment of the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments. Would someone like to make a resolution in this regard?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I will do this. I think, I'm not sure if we were originally supposed to do them together, but we'll have them separate. So I will move the Troy City Council hereby appoints the following persons to serve on the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, or SEMCOG. The council delegate would be James Campbell for a term expiring November 11, 2013. And the city staff alternate would be Mark Miller for a term expiring November 11, 2013.
Is there a second?
Support.
Any discussion? Resolution brought forward by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no board or committee nominations, no requests for closed sessions. We're moving to item I-4, contract amendment for mowing and landscape maintenance services. Would someone like to make a resolution on this?
I've, is this point for discussion or move it first?
Well, you have to move it first, second it, and then discussion.
I'll move the resolution as printed.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, motion moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Campbell. And discussion now, Mr. Teetz?
Yes, I have, is it typical that we don't go out for a bid again? I mean, in this circumstance, we're seeking an amendment to the contract. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, that's correct. And I believe we had gone out for bids on the initial contract. This is a contract amendment, not to essentially add more work during the bid timeframe, but because there were modifications to the contract during the timeframe. And as backup, and hopefully Tim Richnak is approaching as I speak because he knows more about this contract than I do. But we essentially award two kinds of contracts for services. One essentially is a not-to-exceed contract where council passes a resolution not to exceed a certain amount. If that amount is exceeded, we then come back to City Council for approval to increase the contract by that amount. The other kind of contract is called, it's an estimate amount. And when this contract was initially approved, it was an estimated cost of whatever the contract amount was, because we knew there may be some nuances involved in grass cutting. A lot of it is dependent on weather conditions. And we get to a point where essentially the season is over with, and this essentially is a calibration for that work.
Calibration for next year's work?
No, I think it's this year's work. It's the work already performed. Is that correct, Tim?
It's actually calibration for this year's work and next year's projected work. The contract, when it originated in the Parks Department, they were looking at, and we were reorganizing the city, and at the point in time that this contract came to fruition, we actually were still cutting grass on these fields with our own staff. Through that whole process, we had estimates of how much it would cost to do that because we knew we'd be moving into that direction. So we're here to finalize this work and to move forward for next year.
Okay. Calling in, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Henderson?
I have a question about this as well. So the increase of $41,000 is because they now mow more pieces of property than they mowed last year, or is it because they mowed more frequently because of rain conditions?
There's a couple of facts there. One is that originally, it was a partial year when they first started, so the volumes were down. And we in the contract have the ability to mow up to, in the specifications, every four days. And part of that is also to the end of weather conditions. And if you look back at what we did this spring as far as rain in Southeast Michigan and Troy, it was one of the heaviest rain seasons that we had had in several years. So that is a two-part answer to that question.
Okay, can I follow up to that?
Well, I think, I think everybody has to have a chance to speak first. Is there anyone else that has something to say, Councilman Fleming?
I wouldn't have brought this up, but since it's been brought up, I'm assuming, and just correct me if I'm wrong, that we were mowing this ourselves based on the background and red. So this is probably a cost savings. We didn't have the manpower to do it. Is this justified as a cost savings, having a contractor do it versus our own people do it? Because there would have been a cost to mow these if the contractor hadn't done it. We'd have been doing it ourselves, but we don't have the manpower. Is this really a cost savings? Or maybe it's cost neutral. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I don't want to do this.
No, I just wanted to, we don't have that figure if you're looking for a figure on cost savings. But yes, we contracted this stuff out for cost savings. But also, we had a number of people that were reduced in the Parks Department that forced us to go out and do this service to provide, you know, manicured sports fields in order to make them safe. Because, you know, any who's played soccer or any field sports, you know, you can't let the grass get too tall, or the ball's not going to go, the kids may catch their shoes in the tall grass. And, I mean, it's just, it's what needs to be done if we're going to provide that type of sports venue.
City Manager Zerly?
Thank you. And just so that mayor and council and the audience know, about maybe four months ago now, I combined all the maintenance functions within the Department of Public Works. We used to have a Department of Parks Recreation, now we just have a Department of Recreation. So Parks went under Tim. And Mr. Fleming asked a good question. I'm confident that there was an analysis done and indicated, which indicated that it was more cost efficient to mow. But we'll get with Jeff Vigler, who's now the Recreation Director, who used to be the Director of Parks and, or Superintendent of Parks Recreation, and come back with that information. I also want to ask Mr. Richnak a question because the opening paragraph of this sentence for the memo indicates that the contract is for three years and it was awarded in 2010. So I suspect that this contract will be bid again in 2013. Is that correct?
Oh, absolutely.
So it is, so to answer the question, it was bid, it was bid for three years. This essentially is a calibration, and it'll be, it'll be bid again in 2000, for 2013.
Mrs. Bittner, if I wanted to make a comment, would I speak next, or would Councilman Henderson have his second opportunity? I'm not sure how that protocol.
It's your discretion. You can speak if you'd like.
Okay. Well, Councilman Henderson, his follow-up question.
You had mentioned it was a two-part answer to the question. I guess the part that I'm trying to drill down on is, if it was weather-related, is it not possible that if we have a really nice spring this coming year, that the cost will be less?
We have the ability to adjust those mowings, and they are irrigated fields. So the mowing would be consistent over a period of time because it's irrigated. But if we have a drier spring, there may be less mowings, yes. Probably not a large differential between them, but we did have an increase in that. And the larger portion is because of the shifting of operations from where we did it for a partial year as city staff and then contracted the latter portion of that year, and now we're into a full service. And we have a good understanding of where we're at with what's required from the contractor.
I have a couple of questions. I, first of all, studied the backup data that you provided, and I didn't see anywhere where there's a breakdown of that cost estimate of $229,000 plus or minus dollars. I wonder how easy or difficult that would be to give us the cost breakdown for that estimate, first of all?
Your Honored Members of Council, I believe that our purchasing director, Susan Leirstein, would have all the breakdown information. We'll be happy to supply that. Is that correct, Mrs. Leirstein? So we can provide that for your next agenda, if you like.
Okay.
What the breakdown was on the bid for essentially March 15, 2010.
Okay. I also wonder if we can have an analysis of what the actual costs were, that were spent in the year 2000 total and year-to-date 2011, so that we can compare what our estimates are to what reality is. I would like to see that before we add additional money onto the budget myself. That's my thought. That's all I, yes, sir?
I'll be happy to respond. Yeah, we'll be happy to, I take it this would be during our budget sessions, when we make a request for mowing and so forth, we can indicate what the actual amount was for this, this type of work, and what's being requested, not only for this coming year, but we have a three-year budget, so for the following two years. Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm saying, I would like to know what the costs to date are for 2000, what did we spend in 2010, and what did we spend year-to-date in 2011? I'd like to get that information so we can see where our actual numbers are versus where our estimated numbers were. I also would like a little bit more clarification on the defining the liability associated with keeping grass at a one-inch level versus, say, one and a quarter, one and a half. What would the liability be? Could you define that for me, please?
You know what, to be, no, I can't. But I have people that work for me that probably could. So again, I'll be happy to have staff, if I may, Tim, you know, talk to your maintenance people to determine why we have our grass cut at a certain length, and if it could be cut at less frequent intervals to save money, what, what that result is. Is there an industry standard out there that requires cuts at a certain height?
The, let me explain first that we cut down to two inches height, not a one-inch height. What the one inch is, is one inch growth over and above what the mower's set at. So if we cut it at two-inch height, or we maintain it at two-inch height, it's cut when it gets greater than three inches. Now, on some days, it may grow an inch and a quarter. Other days, it, it may be at an inch because we don't go out and actually measure every day. But we know that there's a general growth pattern out there on those fields because of their irrigation and fertilization that's required in order to keep, you know, a nice, thick turf. I mean, many people do that on their lawns, and they choose to cut it at, many lawns are cut at three and a half inches. But they don't have that same type of activity or that same use. So as far as, you know, standards, this is what staff, you know, looks at across all of the industries. And staff goes to many conference situations where the training comes from those facilities. So we are not cutting at one inch, we're looking at maintaining a cut down to two inches. And then anything above that three-inch height, you're starting to get into a situation where it drives down the play that's, we're providing that field for.
Well, my apologies for misinterpreting the heights of the grass, but my major concern was with defining the liability associated with this level of grass cutting that would, that would cause us to have to spend $41,000 additional monies a year.
Liability is, can be spoken in a couple of different ways. Liability, you know, to the, to being able to provide the field in a playable condition so that people, when they're scheduled for their games, they can come and, and the ball goes across the turf and the kids can run without falling, and it affecting the game as it's meant to be played. Not necessarily, am I talking about a liability where someone's going to get severely injured and the city has a financial liability because we didn't maintain? I mean, we would have some liability if we had holes in the field that we didn't keep filled and those other things. But what you're looking at is a, is a liability toward, you know, the integrity of the game and the folks that come to play there and so forth. We always have liability that someone may get injured, and I think that the city attorney may be able to speak to that in a little bit more in depth. But it's not all financial liability. We may not be able to provide where those folks want to come and play here. And that's a decision that, that can be spoken to and developed upon.
Thank you very much. Manager Zerly?
Thank you. We'll be happy to come back and report communication indicating, to the best of our ability, where that breakdown of an extra $41,000 comes from.
And also the actual year-to-date dollars that have been spent on mowing? Yes, ma'am?
Can you take care of that, Tim? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I do have that information available, the background information that you did review. There is a bid tab included in that documentation. And what we've done is, we take the total cost for each one of the proposals. For example, Proposal A was median's, and the total cost was $69,8750 to mow. And we multiply that by the frequency, which in this case was 24. And we come up with a number for that. We did that in each case for each one of the proposals. And when you add them all up, you come up with the $229,000.
Was that number 24 shown on the, on the document? Was that one of the numbers at the bottom that I really didn't use to calculate with the per unit cost?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly. And so that was what was projected, the 229, that's what the contract was set out for. And in essence, we have spent $41,000 more than that, actual dollars.
Correct. Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to call the question.
Yes, sir. Councilman Teetz?
Can we have a vote, please?
What do you want to do?
Call the, call the question, ask for a vote.
Oh, all right, well, can we have a vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the possible changes of hours of operation on the Troy Public Library. If I might ask, if we could find out what each of our council members believes first, whether they want a six-day library or a seven-day library? That's how I'd like to begin this conversation, if we could, Mrs. Bittner.
You would actually need to move one of the resolutions in order to discuss it, but you could then amend that, or abandon that resolution or amend to go to a different resolution.
What if none of these resolutions are what I would bring forward myself?
Then you could request that someone else move it, or you could move it and then just vote against it.
Okay, I can't move a, or bring forth a fifth resolution, if you will?
You could request that right away, you move a resolution that amends one of the resolutions that exists.
Well, I would like to amend the resolution that calls for a seven-day library operation starting in March of 2012, and amend it to read that the first day of Saturday library operation with a seven-day-a-week library starts on January 7, 2012, which is the first Saturday in the new year. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Discussion? Councilman Campbell?
Just out of curiosity, where are we going to get the money to allow a seven-day operation? I guess I haven't seen where that, that money is, is there or is there? I'm kind of curious how we're going to fund this.
Are you asking me?
I'm asking whoever knows.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Henderson?
I was looking at a spreadsheet a little while ago that indicated we have a general fund balance and a library budget of about $357,000. And one of these indicates that it was going to be about $340,000. Yeah, the resolution, res-